Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of councils. Are there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or general nature thereof in tonight's discussions? See none, so move on to the approval of council minutes. Looking for mover and seconder for the minutes of council meeting held September 25th. Councillor Dunn, Councillor Hammond, discussion on the motion. All in favor of that motion? Motion carries, and then looking for the same for the minutes of the special council meeting held September 25th. Councillor Verbiki and Councillor Wilkinson, discussion on that motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Is there any business arising out of either of those minutes? I see none, so we'll move on to public meetings. 6.1, public meeting in regard to drainage, engineers' report for Lebo Creek Northwest Branch. I believe Luanne will be taking us through.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're asking council to recommend the report provided by Baird A.E., dated August 15th, 2017. Sorry, revision date of September 26th, 2017, for new access culvert over the Lebo Creek Northwest Branch pursuant to the provision, section 78 of the Drainage Act. And that council authorize the project be tendered, and should the said tender be within the engineer's estimate of $61,000, or otherwise consented by the owner, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to award the tender and to enter into the necessary agreement. We're also asking council to adopt, give first and second reading to Bylaw 7517, and that a court of revision be held on November 14th. Administration received a request from the previous owner, Peter Bernato, Tribe Acres, on behalf of Dean Masternardi. It was in the transition phase of selling the property at 635 Mercy Road 7, for a proposed greenhouse operation. Again, since MTO was not allowing entrances off of Highway 77 for development, this entrance had to be recreated along Mercy Road 7. I revised the date of the report because there was some issues with MTO not approving the distance setback from the highway. So Baird did have to make some adjustments to it and sent us a revised report. So we do have a deposit in the amount of $5,000, which was received in order to begin the process of hiring the engineer. And prior to construction, we will get the additional funds for the construction of the bridge. David Fossilis from Baird Engineering is here to answer any technical questions you may have as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, council. Councillor Verbiki?
Mayor, thanks. I have two. I guess one is that there are two properties on 77 that already have entrances. Are those going to be closed down, or will they be allowed to use them where the old house was at the corner?
Yep, those two will be removed once the greenhouse is developed. They're part of the stormwater management and the design of that part of the greenhouse, so they will be removed.
They will be removed, okay. And page SP4, page 14 of 28, subsection 18. "The completed work must be done to the satisfaction of the drainage superintendent and must be approved by him." I want to know who the "him" is. Do we have a new drainage superintendent that we're not aware of, or is it a private drainage inspector that took care of this? Why are you guys laughing? This is serious. Oh, geez.
We will. I don't know.
It is a her? Okay, thanks.
Goodness. Any other questions from council? Before I go to the public, I guess my question is, again, going back to the entrances off 77, because I've been, excuse me, asked by a number of residents who live out that way, why it's not happening. And I knew it would be in relation to the MTO. Is it because it's too much of an expense? Because I know we have some industry on the south end of 77 that was allowed. Is it there's not enough property to make it wide enough? Or what is the judgment on that? And whether it's you or Rob or whoever can answer it?
I can answer what I've been told from MTO. The majority of the entrances that have been requested over the past year are in the 80-kilometer zone, so that would have to reduce the speed.
Okay.
And more traffic turning onto the highway is not good for a highway in general.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Again, along the same lines, basically it doesn't become much of a highway if there's an entrance every couple hundred meters. So the MTO's been looking to use the side streets and at least try and control all the entrances off the side streets, and therefore access is at each concession as opposed to in-between concessions, as well as the concessions.
So then, again, to, not to take it away from the drainage part of these things, but from a road's perspective, say, County Road 11, Mercy Road 11, I'm sorry, Tarnship, is it built in such a fashion that it will withstand not just the construction that's going on right now, but the ongoing trucking that will be coming on and off in the future?
Our expectation is that those types of operations will cause considerable deterioration to the road, so we do expect that to happen.
And so that will...
They will cause the roads to deteriorate.
So that's in our planning in the future years to come for road repairs?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. No other questions from council? So this is a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council in this regard? Not? Or council's wishes? Moved by Councillor Verbiki, support by Councillor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, so that's it for the public meetings. We go into reports of staff dedication. We have a report regarding Lebo Creek Northwest Branch. And again, Luanne.
Yes, thank you. Is there not a map attached? No? Okay. This report is actually changing the assessment for the entire parcel. This parcel, it was two parcels, now it's being merged into one. There's actually three drains that it currently affected, the Hooker Drain, the Northwest Branch, the Lebo, and the Highway 77 branch of the Hooker Drain. What were, what the greenhouse development is proposing, that all their water into a storm pond and then discharged to the Northwest Branch, the Lebo. So what we had to do is take them out of the other two drains and then fully assess them into the north branch of the Lebo. That being said, there isn't a buy-in fee for this property because it's been more than 10 years since we've cleaned that drain, so we didn't have an accurate number to charge them. That being said, we're asking council to adopt the report by Baird Engineering for the section 65 report. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council? Councillor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Just out of curiosity, Luanne, like these assessments, are the property owners advised of this type of assessments, or do we just hand them a bill? Like, how does that work out?
What do you mean, are they being advised? They get a copy of this new report, and what happens is the existing assessment schedules on all those drains, their rate is changing. So one, by acreage, and two, by, because it's greenhouse development, it uses more of the drain than what vacant farmland would use, so their rate increases as well. And they are advised during this public notice.
Okay, so we advise them by, I know it's a public notice, that's just in the paper, or...
No, no, we email it directly to them, and we invite them to this meeting tonight.
Okay, so they are aware, then, that there is an increase in that? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, worship.
Any further questions? Council's wishes? Moved by Councillor Jacobs, support by Councillor Dunn. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by the University of Windsor students regarding Leamington Act of Transportation Master Plan, bicycle trails in southeast Leamington, Point Peely National Park to Hillman Marsh. I will let all of you introduce yourselves, because I'm not even going to attempt pronouncing, and look forward to your presentation.
Mr. Mayor, a member of council, my name is Fahad, and this is my colleague Mohammed, and we have the cycle paths. First thing I would like to start with our agenda for today, we will start by introducing our project, and how is it going to be effective on the area. Then we will talk about the condition of the dykes and the roads, and the route's cost estimation, and we'll end up with the conclusion. As you know, historically, the farmland between Mercy Road E and Hillman Marsh was a swampland. Therefore, the dike was started to be constructed in 1894 to be as a drainage system for the land. The dykes were built with the poor materials that does not last for long. As the time goes, the more damage the dike get, need to be fixed. But as it turns out, it would cost a million to fix it. So the cycle paths is proposing a solution that can help fix the dykes, using bike trails to attract tourists while minimizing the cost.
Through the investigation, there are three major dykes, Lloyd Dyke and Martina Dyke and Hillman Dyke. As you know, like, dykes built from bit and clay, these materials do not withstand long-term use and quickly become damaged. Multiple river attempts have been made, but have to really solve the issue. So we have believed the dykes is expensive, and landowners can no longer share the cost among themselves, and their land is at risk of flooding. If the dykes fails, a shattered area will be flooding and will destroy the lands. Most of the roads have deteriorating surface that either needs to be rebuilt or refixed. So let's take as an example, like Mercy Road 19 is a gravel road, and it will limit certain bikes, like mountain bikes, so it's not comfortable for riders to use and provide this friction for cars. So potentially more accidents will happen.
For the route, we are proposing two alternative designs for bike trails. Starting by alternative one, it will start at the Point Peely Park gate, on the top of Lloyd Dyke, going all the way to Marantet, on the top of Marantet Dyke, all the way to East Beach Road, and then turning on the top of Hillman Dyke, and then finally will end up to Mercy Road 19 until it's get to Hillman Marsh. For the routes two is a bit different. It starts on road, on Mercy Road E, turning on Mercy Road 19, and then Mercy Road C, then all the way to East Beach Road, and then it will end up the same as alternative one design. The difference between the two route, the two alternative in term of sight view, level of safety and comfort, is as it follows. For the route one, since it's on the top, mostly on the top of the dykes, the view is going to be enjoyable for the tourists to ride their bike on the top of the dykes, whereas in term of level of safety and comfort satisfaction is going to be very high. For the route two, since it's mostly on the road, the view is not going to be as enjoyable as route one, and the level of safety and comfort is not going to be very satisfying because of the traffic.
This is one of the proposed...
I just need you to swing the microphone over to you.
I'm sorry. This is one of the proposed connection for entrance and exit of Point Peely Park. As you can see, we have added a three-stop signs, and the design of the bike trail is going to be sharing, like, between bikes and cars, and either it's going to be on the road or off the road.
So the recommended cost includes the cost of dike's maintenance, cost of signage, and cost of paving, which is going to be totaling up $21,876,260.
Conclusion, we have a letting of the dykes is important. It is expensive, but it needs to be fixed. We have proposed two different designs, shared on both. By doing this idea, it's going to attract other people to come and visit, and may infest under city.
So on behalf of our group members, I would like to thank all of academic advisor Dr. Chris Lee and industrial advisor Professor John Toffelmeier for their patience and help and support with us. And I would like to thank Mr. Mayor and members of council for the hospitality and giving us a chance to present our work, and I hope it was well presented, and we are very happy to answer any question. Thank you.
Okay. John, I see your signal at me. You want to...
Well, thanks again, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I just also want to introduce Dr. Chris Lee. He's my colleague at the university. He's been there for about 10 years, I think, and I owe him a debt of gratitude because he took over teaching the undergrad course that I taught for 15 years before he arrived. One of the things that is a mandatory part of the program and of the engineering program at the university is that the students have to prepare a term report. We call it a capstone project. It's an eight-month team project, and it's to deal with real engineering problems, and they take it from beginning to end, including presentations and answering questions and so on. This is a bonus feature. These are students have completed their work and they've already graduated, but I thought it would be a topical item. There are continuing items on your desk all the time about southeast Leamington, and one of, of course, last year was, this concept was included in your Act of Transportation Master Plan, the idea of having bike system on top of the dykes. I think one of the challenges is to do whatever we can to broaden the public interest and the public portfolios and public policy components that can share in the benefits of this proposal and also share in the costs of it because it's not sustainable under the status quo. So that's one of the reasons I was very happy to be able to have them make the presentation tonight. Just to conclude, I brought with me, when my dad cleaned out his desk in 1976 after he retired, he gave me a copy of March 1894 Bylaw Number 523, which established the East Marsh Drain, and he put a handwritten note on it, said, "Please keep tab of this drain." I think I did that. I don't think he expected it to take my lifetime as well. I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor. Of course, we're open for questions.
Council, company mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good job, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I just want to know, Mercy Road E stops at Road 19, so are you proposing that the rest of that trail will go on top of the dike? Then we'd have to build something?
The first route, let me just, the first route, it starts at, on the top of Lloyd Dyke. It goes all the way to Marantet Dyke. But in the second route, it will be on road until it get to Mercy Road 19, and then turns to...
Mr. Mayor, it would be on top of the south limit of the Marantet Dyke.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to know if I was correct. My only thing here is, as always, the dollar value is staggering. Just to say that, John, we've been down this road, and it always ends up being the...
All we can say in that regard is that if it were possible to have some sort of joint venture with Point Peely Park, or with ERCA, or with the Ministry of Environment, or with the ecotourism industry, or the federal government, or whatever, this is another idea. It's not just a drain, and it's not just the property owners. If you can broaden it out to the birders and the ecotourists and so on, then it's, you know, another way of generating some cost-sharing partners. That's the idea.
Further to that, it would take all of them at the table, I think, for the 20, almost 22 million. Thank you.
Councillor Verbiki?
With the mayor, thanks. I want to go back to the southeast Leamington meeting at the Portuguese Club. However, there was talk maybe of flooding that. Why would we spend $21 million and ERCA decides to come in and flood it three years after that?
Of course, it's a complicated project, and there's a lot of different aspects to it. We've only touched, the students have only touched on the sort of engineering side of it to show that it's a feasible idea. It does exist within your Act of Transportation Master Plan, and so however, whatever it may take to move the idea forward is fair game. And Luanne is here, or maybe she left? But of course, these are all under the jurisprudence of the Drainage Act at the moment, and so there's a lot of complicated legal issues and such. So all I, all we're trying to say is, maybe there's another way, or a new way, or additional ways of attracting outside partners for the funding of whatever may happen.
And I'm glad you put the dates up there of, I think it was 1894. I mean, considering the age of those dykes and what has been accomplished back in those days, they've held up quite well, and, you know, I just, it was a good report. It's, it'll be on the wish list. I don't know where Peter's going to put this in his priority. I'm not too happy with the two, four, seven stop signs within about 1,000 feet either, but that's another factor.
Those are stop signs for cyclists, correct? Or is, yeah, because it's on the dike, it'd just be for the cyclists. Horse riders, too, that aren't supposed to be on the dykes. Mr. Neufeld?
Further to Councillor Verbiki's comments, part of this came out of a discussion that Mr. Sharon and I were having with Mr. Toffelmeier one day in the office. And the concept of rewilding is a term that comes out of the Netherlands. And the Netherlands have, as we all know, are very good at recovering land from water. But there is a movement on now to allow the water to come back in, and essentially, that's where the term came from, rewild the area. In those areas, what they have done is they have built walking paths and biking paths similar to what would be on, oh, there you go. There we go. And if you consider the dykes now being surrounded by water, or marshlands, similar to what we see in Point Peely National Park, that's what it would return to, be rewilded. And the ecotourism component that we were, we were talking about, and, you know, let's be clear, we were philosophizing, we were maybe dreaming a little bit, but that's where some original thoughts come out of, and it was, Mr. Toffelmeier at that point was indicating that he had students who had been considering something just like this, and that's where this invitation and, an invitation to the students to come and present to us their ideas.
So that answered my first question, is what was the inspiration behind this? Because I had never considered the routes that you had shown. I think we have our, a different vision, but not that it's a bad idea. So to Fahad or Mohammed, the, I know in the very middle section of your presentation here, it's a little bit small for my eyes to see, but I'm understanding more now that the 4.3 million, well, the $21 million is actually rebuilding the surface and the sides of those dykes, I assume, right? To support just cyclists?
Yes.
And you think that actually has to be done?
Yeah, well, yeah, I believe so.
Okay. Have you been down to the area physically?
Yeah, we took a tour with Professor John that day, and we looked around and we saw what's going on exactly.
All right. Because some of the routes, too, when you mentioned Road E, I'm thinking that road is so narrow now.
Yeah, we saw that.
I wouldn't want to be riding my bike on there when a school bus is coming down the road at me, but, you know, it's, they're options, so things to think about.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to clarify on the costing issue. It's not sufficient for the students to just pick up the previous reports and copy down what the cost estimates were. We have them go back to first principles and develop the quantities and unit costs and such. So these are their own costs, and they're independent of the other studies that have been done. The other studies have been, I would say, more comprehensive in terms of the detailed engineering, so you just need to be aware of the context of the cost estimates that are provided in the report.
No, I appreciate that. And there was, I forget what else there was. I know when you showed Mercy, Mercy Road 2 up there, that's my road, so it doesn't look like that anymore. I went away on vacation, I came back, and it looks nice again, so surprised me. Thank you, Councillor Verbiki. Anyway, you know, it's an alternative route. We, I think in our minds, we're thinking we're going to connect our marina, which is on Robson Road, which is already developed for cycling and walking, and try to connect it and go down Point Peely Drive, which is a much more direct route for us. But even this, over and above that, would, like you say, give opportunity for tourism, birders, whoever else, to see actually the onion fields and everything else that's out there that a lot of people don't even know exists. So kind of a cool layout, so thank you very much for the info.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And Councillor Dunn?
Through you, worship. I just have one question, I'm sorry, regarding the private lands as they go along the tops of the dykes. Did you allow enough room between the actual park and the private lands to have enough space for the double-wide road? Or would you have to mitigate that with the private landowners?
Well, we haven't been there yet, so I'm sorry, could you just, I didn't hear you properly.
I apologize. I'm referring to the, along the top of the dike on East Road, Mercy Road East, that portion, the dike there, is private lands to the one side. And so we've had a problem with them cutting trees down in the past. Is there, have you, would you have to mitigate that with those landowners, or is there enough land there to be able to do the bike path?
We just designed the bike trail on the top of Lloyd Dyke because it took you all the way. I know it's a private property over there, but we'll have to check that out before we do anything.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report. Food for thought. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the next report, which is one regarding the parking lot control exemption blocks, Gulfwood Lakes subdivision. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Members of council, Planning Services has received a request to exempt blocks of land that are in Phase 1 of the Gulfwood Lakes Plan of Subdivision from the provisions of part lot control... Did you allow enough room between the, uh, the actual park and the private lands to have enough space for the double-wide road? Or would you have to mitigate that with the, the private landowners?
Well, well, we haven't been there yet, so, uh, I'm sorry, could you just, uh, I didn't hear you properly.
I apologize. There, I'm referring to the, along the top of the dyke, um, on East Road, uh, Mercy Road East? That portion, the, the dark, uh, the dyke there, um, is private lands to the one side. And so, we've had a problem with them cutting trees down in the past, like, is there, uh, have you, would you have to mitigate that with those landowners? Or is there enough land there to be able to do the bike path?
We, we just designed, uh, the bike trail on the top of Lloyd Dyke, cause it took you all the way. I know it's a pri- a private property over there, but we'll, we'll have to check that, uh, out before we do anything.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your report. Food for thought. Thank you. Okay, yeah, seven point two, seven point three, okay, so we'll move on to the next, uh, report, which is, uh, one regarding the parking lot control exemption blocks, Gulfwood Lakes subdivision. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, members of council. Planning Services has received a request to exempt blocks of land that are in Phase One of the Gulfwood Lakes Plan of Subdivision from the provisions of part lot control under the Planning Act. So under the Planning Act, there's really only three ways we can, uh, convey parcels of land. So one is either through lots in an approved plan of subdivision, through the, an approved, um, lot in a consent, or by way of this part lot control exemption. Uh, so this request is dealing with that third method. Uh, we typically see this when, um, we're looking to establish a property line along the common wall of townhouses or semi-detached dwellings that are in an approved plan of subdivision. Uh, when we get part lot control, the exemption, it allows the owner to register the deeds for individual units. Um, and this can only happen first when a bylaw is first approved by council, and then that bylaw is forwarded on to the approval authority, which in our case is the County of Essex. That bylaw can then be registered on the title of the lots, allowing the, the deeds to be registered. Uh, Leovis Homes has constructed thirteen units. Those are on the north and south side of Tanglewood Drive. It includes four semi-detached units, as well as nine townhouse units. Uh, the exemption, if approved, will allow the owner to register the deeds for each of the separate units, um, in accordance with the lot layout that was approved as part of the Gulfwood Lake subdivision agreement. Administration has reviewed this request. Uh, we are in a position to support the exemption from the part lot control provisions of the Planning Act. Uh, those reasons are listed in the report. In particular, uh, these lands are in a fully serviced area. The service and roads have been constructed in accordance with the Development Standards Manual for this development. Uh, there is a development agreement in place, which acknowledges that these blocks were to be, um, developed for semi-detached and townhouse units, so we knew they were gonna go there. Um, under this process, there are no public notice requirements, um, and there are no appeal opportunities for this type of approval. Uh, these units have been constructed. Uh, the bylaw before council will expire in one year, and this is to ensure that separate deeds are registered for each of those units in a timely manner. Um, however, if the owner, um, needs to, they can apply to council to extend that timeline, as long as we receive that, uh, that extension request prior to it expiring. Uh, pending any questions from council, the recommendation is that bylaw seventy-seven dash seventeen be approved to exi- exempt blocks fifty, or forty-seven through fifty on registered plan twelve M six oh seven from the provisions of part lot control, and that administration be for, uh, directed to forward the bylaw and supporting documentation to the County of Essex for final approval.
Thank you very much. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. These particular, uh, townhouses that are built, I see currently, some of them have already been sold and people moving into them. Is that like premature to this going forward, or what's the process? Or how does this become? Like, they register each residence, and then how does a tax rule, uh, come into play?
Um, I think that would relate more to the conveyance or the transfer of ownership. I do recognize that, uh, David Halliwell is here this evening. He's the representative of Leovis Homes, um, who would be, um, involved in the transfer of ownership.
Yeah, at this point, uh, nothing will be conveyed to any of the, the home buyers. At this point, the homes are constructed and there are certain, uh, individuals that are living there under like, uh, an occupancy agreement. But until this is passed and approved at the county, that will be the time when they will obtain, we will do, transfer the property to them.
If I may, worship. So technically, at this stage, then they're just, uh, basically like a rental property, uh, without conveying the ownership to the individuals that have purchased or intend to purchase, is that correct?
Yeah, to some extent, yeah. We wouldn't call them renters, but they're occupying the property.
So, I guess I'll confuse you. So what is it, what are they taxed as, as a residence now? I mean, like, it's during construction, I, I don't know who can answer this one for me, but, uh, I guess there's different rates that would apply during a construction phase, I would presume, and then upon completion, and then upon the sale of the property, right? So like, I, like, when does all this kick in? Like, it seems to me that this is delaying the process. Now we're asking for permission and they're sold and they're occupied. I'm a little confused with the whole scenario.
Danielle?
I don't think I can comment on the assignment or the apportionment of the values and how that will kick in, but when a building permit is submitted, a value is submitted with the building permit that's forwarded to MPAC. Um, this will allow the individual units to be assessed, and so I think that's what, what's important here is the one-year timeline. Um, it requires them to register those deeds so that we can get all of that done. Uh, that servicing accounts can be set up under the proper ownerships, rather than having these properties exist as four-unit dwellings, um, and, and registrations occurring haphazardly and apportements for assessed values. So I can't comment really on the appropriateness and how it will reflect, but I can tell you that this is the process to ensure that that happens.
Further questions? Counsel's wishes? Moved by Counsel Jacobs, support by Counsel Verbiki. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next report is, uh, one regarding the, the request to release development restriction agreement. Danielle, as well?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Uh, Planning Services has received a request from the owner of eleven Seneca Road, uh, to release the property from a nineteen ninety-three development restriction agreement, which was registered on the title of that property. Eleven Seneca Road is a vacant property within the industrial subdivision. It's found on the west side of Seneca, about halfway down the, um, to the cul-de-sac. The property is subject to two agreements, which are registered on title. The first is the nineteen eighty-two development control agreement, um, that's with Velusa Industrial. Um, and the second is the development restriction agreement. Under the second agreement, uh, the owner agreed to restrict the development on eleven Seneca so that the water rights that were associated with that property could be allocated towards the development of residential lots along Malibu Drive and Cherokee Lane. So you can see the relationship between the two on the map. At that time, there was a general development restriction imposed on new development as the Union Water System was at its limits for water treatment capacity, and the member municipalities were in dispute over how to implement the necessary expansion. As we know, the resu- uh, the dispute was resolved, and since that time, Union Water has increased the available water treatment capacity to the entire area. So in order to allow this property to be, to be developed now, the agreement requires that the municipality be advised by the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, that there is sufficient water capacity, capacity available to service this development. So through Mr. Kehoe at Leamington Water Services, the municipality has obtained written acknowledgement from Union Water that the water capac- capacity issues of nineteen ninety-three have been addressed, and that the treatment capacity of Union Water Supply System has since been increased as well. And also through Mr. Kehoe's assistance, the municipality obtained written acknowledgement from the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change that we have received the same confirmation from, or that they had received the same confirmation from Union Water regarding water treatment capacity, and then have, following that, have provided the notification to the municipality uh, that is required within the terms of the agreement. So these acknowledgements support the release of the agreement from the title of the property by the municipality. Uh, based on that information, Planning Services is in a position to recommend that council authorize the release of eleven Seneca from the terms and provisions of the development restriction agreement, and that the Director of Legal and Legislative Services be authorized to execute those necessary documents to do so.
Thank you very much, Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. Um, we've had some discussions, I think, previously on this particular piece of land. I guess my question at this, will this release it now? Is it free of any, any incumbences, uh, or is there still more to go through prior to this being released?
Um, so the property is still subject to the terms of the nineteen eighty-two development agreement, so there's some requirements within that agreement. The property is also required to seek, um, site plan approval for any development. So those two items would have to be reviewed.
Could you mention, you mentioned two, what was the first one again?
The nineteen ninety, or sorry, nineteen eighty-two, uh, subdivision agreement for the development of that entire area. So there are some, uh, requirements within that agreement, which are specific to properties within that, uh, well, all the properties within that, uh, development. So they'll still have to, um, address those, and then we would review it up under site plan control.
Okay, Counsel Hammond?
You worship, fine, uh, thank you. Um, I'm gonna move the acceptance of the report, but with a comment, if, if I may. I know that there's ample water back in there now. I mean, I know the fire department is trained and had training sessions in there a number of times, and there's lots of water pressure back in there. So I'll move the acceptance.
Support by Counsel Dunn? Oh, sorry? Not a question you were supporting as well? Okay. Further questions? All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Didn't even have to talk. The next report is one regarding the Community Improvement Plan, uh, twenty seventeen eighteen funding. Danielle?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Uh, the final Planning Services report, um, is regarding the CIP plan. So council will recall that they adopted the Uptown Commercial District Community Improvement Plan in two thousand and twelve um, as a tool to assist with the redevelopment and the revitalization of the uptown area. The plan established a CIP area boundary, as well as the policies and criteria that lay out how the programs under the plan were to be implemented and offered to the property owners in the CIP area. For the most part, the CIP offered six grant programs to owners, which provided financial assist, uh, incentives for projects and improvements to properties which were viewed as meeting the objectives of the plan. Uh, the plan was intended to be implemented over five years, and funding for each of those programs was allocated annually through the budget process. Uh, within the report, council has been provided with a chart, uh, which offers an overview of the grant money that was available under each of the programs in total for the five years, as well as the grant money that was approved for each of the projects. As previously reported, the take-up on the grant programs remained slow but steady over the five years, as is typical with CIP programs. Uh, these types of programs really require a community buy-in, um, of the benefits and investing both in an area and property. And that buy-in gradually increases over time, as visual improvements are seen on streetscapes, vacant stores are filled, and even municipal investment is noticed. In response to the slow uptake and to feedback received from property owners, council approved many minor changes to the CIP plan that would assist property owners in accessing the grants and making grants available for programs with the most demand. As the program ended, it was brought to the attention of council that many property owners in the CIP area did not realize the funding was only going to be available until the end of two thousand and sixteen. Um, and during budget considerations, council directed that an additional fifty thousand dollars be made available under the CIP plan in two thousand and seventeen. In order to extend the time for financial incentives available under the CIP, council must amend Figure Four of the approved CIP. Figure Four is the action plan that establishes the timeframe and the budget amounts for each of the CIP programs and initiatives. Council is permitted to change the action, action plan without a formal amendment to the plan, including timing and budget allocations. A formal amendment, such as a change to the boundary of the CIP area, would require public consultation, review, uh, review with the ministry, and adoption of the amendment by council. Uh, this change seeks to extend the years that funding can be made available and allocate a maximum amount each year. There would be no changes to the programs offered or the eligibility criteria to be able to obtain that grant. Even though this is viewed as only a change to the action plan and has not, and is not a change requiring an amendment to the plan, uh, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs was advised of this sta- change by staff. The revised action plan has been attached to the report, and you'll see that it lists both the years two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Uh, two thousand and eighteen has been included to allow council the option of making funding available under this program in two thousand and eighteen. Council would decide whether any money is available through regular budget considerations. Just like in past years, council did not have to put money towards the programs if it wasn't warranted. The action plan prepares to allocate funding to both the, um, building exterior and facade program and the interior renovation program in the amounts that are listed in the revised Figure Four. To date, Planning Services has received three applications for projects seeking approval under the two thousand and seventeen funding, um, for both of those programs, being the facade and the renovation program. As noted, the CIP grant funding was approved as part of the two thousand and seventeen budget. The pending applications are awaiting approval of the amended action plan to the CIP in order to proceed with finalizing the requirements under the, under the plan. Pending discussion with council, the recommendation to council this evening is that Figure Four to the CIP dated July two thousand and twelve, as amended, be further amended to include a revised action plan for two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you very much, Counsel Verbiki.
With the mayor, so this CIP is still for the BI area, A area?
The designated area, yes.
Thanks.
Counsel Dunn?
Through you, worship. Danielle, what are the name of the three businesses? Would you happen to know the names of these businesses? You just list their, uh, addresses on the form? Would you happen to have that?
Um, twenty-one, twenty-seven Erie Street North, um, the former Dixie Auto Land Building. I believe there's a new dance company in that, uh, in that building now. Forty-three Mill Street West is the Gregory Building. And forty, forty-six Erie Street South is, um, the total of the buildings occupied, starting with the Gene Academy and going around the corner on Mill Street, I believe Young Drivers of Canada, there's a few offices in there. They're all one piece of property, so that's the third building there.
Okay. Counsel Hammond?
You worship, thank you. Danielle, as I bring forward my concerns, um, you're the author of this report, and these aren't levied at you directly. I hope you understand that. And I know your department has been short-staffed over the past two or three years. However, in reading through this, I was disappointed. We, we have talked about this and talked about this, and the expansion in the area to better, to better utilize the CIP. Uh, you know, the people who were in the BI area had ample time to use this, and you, we know. They've used about a third of them. And I know notices were sent out. For them to say now that we didn't know that it was available, or we didn't know that it was gonna expire, uh, um, the other thing is, I, I, there's been at least three, if not four businesses that I know of, two right down this way, or three potentially. Well, the Ryan is no longer in need, but, and one on Southern Constrict, they've been waiting for at least two or two and a half years to be able to get access and get some help to, to renovate and put new facades on their buildings and whatever. So I'm, I'm disappointed, and we also, I, I'm disappointed in the fact that, and I understand that it, you know, it takes an official, a change to the official plan in order to expand that area, but we've had those talks. And we've also, uh, we had a, I think, a lengthy talk during our one-day revitalization of the uptown talk. And that was, that was a key part of it, at least in my point of view, was not only to, to the resurgence of the CIP grant, but also to expand the territory, to, to allow more people to, to have utilize it. And I, I'm, I'm disappointed in the fact that, now that it's back, that we haven't been able to do that.
Okay. Counsel Jacobs?
Uh, thank you, worship. I, I guess mine would be directed more to, uh, CEO, if, if I may. With the introduction, or I know that there's discussions, uh, turn, uh, are currently on, with the tax reductions that the absent landlords are now experiencing in the downtown area, like some of these vacant buildings and so forth, and we're looking at adjusting that, I think, with, with other municipalities. And I guess that, like this incentive program, as Counsel Hammond has made mention, hasn't really been accessed by those absentee landlords. Would they be encouraged now that if we increase their tax rate under this, hopefully, new regulation that, that goes into play, to encourage them to take advantage of these incentives and do something with the downtown? Because we want to revitalize it, we want to, you know, spruce it up and so forth. And now we're, you know, introducing with the bank theater and different things in the downtown area. That, we, we need to encourage them to do something with these properties. Maybe you could give me some response, if I may?
Well, that certainly is the, uh, that is the hope, uh, with the county council, um, looking at this situation. Yeah, if you're given a tax break, um, because your building isn't, uh, doesn't have occupants, um, there's very little incentive to do anything more. So, it's a good, it's a good thought. Um, but the problem is that they still have to invest some of their own money. And, um, it is baffling to me that, uh, people would own property in our uptown and not be willing to invest in it. Perhaps this will be a, um, a springboard to getting some people to invest, and, and perhaps the incentive will actually be for those people who own properties and aren't getting a tax break. Maybe they're more willing to sell to somebody who is willing to come in, um, invest in the property and to take advantage of our CIP program.
And I understand that, and one of the reasons I ask that, I think, uh, like, sitting on the, uh, bylaw appeal committee, that we've had one in particular that, uh, purchased a building that was burnt and so forth. that was burnt and so forth, and simply boarded it up and sat on it. And, you know, an order was issued, you've got to clean it up, but he's saying, "Well, I was told I could hold on." But anyway, I guess that's where I'm going with it. They're buying these properties up, I guess, at fire sale prices, and then they're just sitting on them. And I think that we need to, you know, I don't know, kickstart, or whatever you want to say with that, but it's...
I think an important component of that is the enforcement of the property standards as well, which I think that there's pretty strong evidence that this municipality and this administration has taken steps to ensure that those people who are owners and whose businesses or properties are dilapidated and hurting our Uptown. We're taking steps on making sure that those places are boarded up. That is an equal incentive for some people to fix up their places before it happens to them. And the ones that do get boarded up, well, they're going to have to deal with the authorities as we move forward. So I think that it's a combination of things. This situation has existed for quite some time, and it's going to take a little bit of time to get some traction on this, but I think we've made pretty clear statements already in the Uptown that we're not going to sit idly by anymore. Mr. Mayor, I would like the opportunity, though, to address Councilor Hammond's concerns as well. Although the steps that were taken by council to eliminate the development charges as a way of increasing the development and investment in Leamington, we were all very hopeful that it would be successful. I don't think anybody thought that we would have record years and back-to-back record years. Maybe we hoped for it, or we even wished for it, but I don't think any of us anticipated having the kind of growth and investment. And I think it's also really important to understand that the amount of investment that is coming across council's desk here, as administration brings it forward, is only a percentage of what we see coming across our desks and haven't moved forward yet. In other words, what you're seeing are just the things that are actually moving forward. There's a whole nother level of work that is occurring in the background for development that may come and likely will come in the future. My point is this, that we're disappointed, as administration, we are disappointed too, that we couldn't get to the CIP program in the review that we would like to have done. But this is a... This is one of the few times I'll use the word compromise, because I don't like that word. But this is a compromise, because we know it's important to council to get a CIP program in place. We know that council would like to see an expanded CIP program. We want to see that too, and that's alluded to in the report, that in 2018, we will be looking at that. But the amount of time in the process that we have to follow in order to expand the program is significantly more than what we are doing now. In other words, we couldn't justify holding up the implementation of a CIP program, even though it's not exactly the way that we want it yet. To go through that other process would mean no CIP program for an extended period of time. So this was a compromise, let's get some money back available to those who will use it, even if it's still limited to the designated area, while we work on this CIP program to do exactly what you're talking about doing. And I'll say it again, I understand council's disappointment, maybe even a little bit of frustration, but that frustration and disappointment has to be considered in the context of the incredible amount of work that has been coming through our planning department, and often at times when we were understaffed in our planning department. So I guess what I'm saying is, I'm coming to the defense of my planning department and the building department, and all of the departments that are affected by the... I've said it publicly, the courageous steps that council has taken, but the outcome has been phenomenal. I don't think there's any other word that fits this. It is phenomenal, the amount of work that has been generated. We are benefiting by that. The future of Leamington looks incredibly bright, but the transition from one to another, to this new plan, I think caught all of us by a bit surprised, a good surprise, but I understand your disappointment, but it is not from a lack of trying to get at it. This has now been given some priority within the planning department, and Paul Barnable has been instrumental in moving this forward within the department. But you have to understand that the backlog had to be recovered first. And with the people that we have in the planning department now, I think that Danielle would agree with me if I say that we've gotten our arms around the work. To say there's light at the end of the tunnel, I think that it's even better than that. We are now planning how we're going to manage the work that's coming in. We've gotten rid of that backlog. We're getting focused on the CIP and a couple of other longer-term projects that we wanted to get to. So I understand your frustration or your disappointment, but it has to be within the context of the work that... The amount of work that has been put before us.
Councilor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. To Councilor Jacobs' comment about that business that has been boarded up, at least I think I know which one you're talking about. And I don't know whether they're sitting waiting for some CIP money, but they're on the wrong side of the street, you know? So if they're expecting that, they're not going to get it. Mr. Newfeld, I think that when I made my explanation, I said, "I understand the backlog of work in that department," and I do. I bring this forward because there's at least a half a dozen merchants sitting out there that you run into, either monthly or weekly, that ask, "When's that going to happen? When's that going to happen?" And they need to hear this dialogue. They need to know that, yes, we are looking at this. They need to know that... And I'd be happy to mention who they are, if you so desire, because it's not... I'm not fabricating that. They ask all the time, because they're looking for some help. So, given the fact that, you know, that you are caught up in the backlog, and we are moving forward, and I don't like to work compromise either, Mr. Newfeld, so do we have a timeline? I know we talked about in 18, but can we talk about it? So that we can go back to these merchants or these store owners and say, "Yeah, it's going to be dealt with in the first three months or the five months." Do we have a timeline that we could expect to look at this again?
Danielle, no pressure.
So what I'll call the revised Uptown CIP, so I really think a new CIP that looks at different programs, and that's part of the public consultation. Funds have been put into the 2018 budget that's being prepared to do that in-house. So we really don't have to reinvent the wheel on this one. We just need to really get out there and talk to who wants to use it and how they'll use it. As far as timeline, we will start that as soon as the budget's approved, and in concert with our other big projects that are going on right now. So it is very difficult, but again, that's why we've suggested that even abridge the 2018 for people that are within the CIP area. And I do, I think, what I hear you saying is, it's the new plan and the new people that want to be involved.
Deputy Mayor?
Couple of things, if I may. I guess I'm seeing it a little bit more as a glass half-full, Councilor Hammond, because to me, we had almost a million dollars we could not give away. They only took $330,000 of $970. So to me, let them be a little bit frustrated. We were banging our heads against the wall for five years trying to give the darn stuff away. So for them to have to wait two years, well, good, now we're a hot commodity. We've got other people that want in on it. I think it's a really good sign. It shows that what we wanted in the first place has come to fruition at the end of six years. So if somebody has to wait, get on them, because we waited, and we waited, and we waited. So I'm not frustrated with this, I'm frustrated with them that they didn't see it when it was right in front of their noses. And the one... No, I don't think you did. But anyway, the guys coming in, that's a great thing, too, that they want to be part of it, because again, six years ago, when we were busting our buns, trying to see who we were going to encompass, those people didn't want us. It might have meant they might have to pay towards the BI levy. And no! So to me, all of this is something that has grown and developed, and I think we're exactly where we should be. We're at a point where people want to be part of it, and they want to buy into it. And if we have a million dollars in the next five years, I'll bet you they'll all be lined up, and every penny of that million dollars will be gone. So to me, thinking it's not that bad, buddy. I'm thinking it's a good thing. No, I heard you. No, I did. Anyway, that's all I wanted to say. I feel like we are where we want it to be.
I'll go back.
Last rebuttal. Deputy Mayor, with all due respect, I don't think you heard what I said, because what I said was, yeah, we've used one-third of the money that was allocated, and nobody cared. They said they didn't know that it was going to run out, they said they didn't know that it was there and it was available. That's what I said. Not talking about the people currently in the area, I'm talking about the people who are outside the BI area that want to access these funds. That's the people I don't want to see have to wait. The people uptown, they've had their kick at it. We know that four, or five, six of them used it. That's exactly what I said. In fact, I highlighted it. Thirty-four percent of it's been used, out of the million dollars, so.
Councilor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. Danielle, real quick, what's your plan or your method to alert the Boundary Area people that a plan is back in effect? Is it going to be through a paper, website, communication? Could you explain that?
Well, we don't have a strategy as of yet, we're just starting to plan for that. So I think all of those things, but we've heard the comments, we have a list of people that are outside of the area. We're looking at the zoning, the uses of the buildings, who... We have records of who came in and made the inquiries over the six years, so we'll use that. Part of the public consultation, as Deputy Mayor McDonald has indicated, was there was a big public consultation to find out, how do we get the most bang for our buck? That was why the area was chosen, so part of that public consultation is to determine, what are we trying to achieve, and how can we achieve that? Where is that area? So that's part of what we'll be going through.
So, and that's what I wanted to come back to, because everybody's made some good points here, and we are. We're all disappointed, frustrated. Well, I'll make a compromise. Who was on... I know you and I were involved in the original CIP development. Councilor Verbeke, you were here too, and Councilor Jacobs? And so, yeah, so you guys weren't involved in that whole process we had to go through. And I only say that because what I heard from Danielle tonight is, we don't have to go through that whole big process again. We can just take what we've got and massage it to where we want it to get to be. So that, to me, is good news. The bad news is, and we were talking earlier about this, quite honestly, is that, you know, for the last couple of years, Danielle has kind of been on her own in a department that's seen us going from $40 million a year to $70 million to $140 million, and now $143 million of investments this year. And so now we're back up to basically full complement. And so, yeah, some things get put on the backburners. But what Deputy Mayor McDonald said is correct. I mean, when I read the part that some of the property owners are saying that, "Well, we didn't know it was going to run out," well, yeah, they did. That consultative process we went through was very clear to everybody. You've got this period of time to use this money, and it's done. And I think in our minds, we knew we'd probably rule it out or do it differently, but it was going to be for that period of time, here's the money, get on it now, or miss the train. And like you, though, Councilor Hammond, I agree, excuse me, I was hoping that the rewrite would be done by the end of this year, so we could institute it in 2018. I understand what has gone on and why we're not going to be there. But this report, Danielle is saying, we're going to put money, well, there's money in the 2017 budget already for whoever's going to appeal, and we're saying, "Let's put money in again for 2018 to get us through while we do that CIP development." And going back to the timeline question, would it be done in 2018? Is it possible? I'm not holding you to it.
So we've prepared to do it in-house, in the 2018 budget that you would see, so we've allocated funds to be able to prepare the plan, public consultation. And then we've also inserted an amount for programming, so that would intend that, yes, we do intend to have it available. So much like this one, I believe it was approved mid-2012, monies were sitting, waiting to be allocated that year. So we've planned the same thing for this one, so it would be finished and approved, ready to go out this year. Or, sorry, 2018, I'm thinking ahead.
Yeah. And the real question is, there's that process that you are going to have to go through to appeal to whoever, to get approval, to come back to us, so we can do what we want to do. So, okay. Any further questions? Deputy Mayor?
Not an argument, just a question. So of the $969,000, we only used the 332. So that's 636. It says the amount was raised through taxation, and the one sentence was sufficient to provide for the grants awarded. And then it says the unused funding was not raised. Was that put into reserves, then? If it was raised through taxation, but it was not raised...
But it wasn't raised through taxation. It was... See, now you and I have to go back to when we first started this whole thing. We knew what the budget amount we wanted, but we knew we couldn't just set it all aside in one big lump sum. So each year, we'd raise whatever was required for that year. And so if... And I really can't answer the financial side of things of it, but I know we never raised whatever the total amount, 1.4 million or whatever it was. We never raised that out of our tax dollars, we just raised what we needed to pay out, correct? So I know it gets a little confusing reading there, but we've never charged the taxpayers that full amount. It's just what we've actually paid out in the grants, so. No further questions? We're to council's wishes, then.
There is a motion. I'm sorry, Councilor Dunn moves, supported by the deputy mayor. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Next item is a report regarding the Uptown Master Plan, Mill Street RFP award.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 1999, the municipality completed an implementation strategy, Uptown-Leamington Business Improvement Area Urban Development Study, but not all of the concepts and strategies were implemented or have been implemented. And then the Jones Consulting Group completed the CIP, which we've just been talking about in 2012, and the CIP remains one of our key strategic objectives. Council and administration now require a fresh look at the traffic, infrastructure, public spaces, and parking needs in the Uptown core. And a master plan would enable Leamington to develop attractive and efficient choices for many people, including pedestrians, cyclists, and transit, in concert with automobiles and convenient and accessible parking, and support the vision of the Uptown area, which I included in my report and has been previously presented to council, but it's included in my report as Schedule A. So to move this forward, qualified firms were asked to... We issued an RFP, and qualified firms were asked to demonstrate their expertise in things like traffic, cycling, walking, parking, urban planning, and streetscape design. Generally, the assignment would follow the approach outlined in the Institute of Transportation Engineers document titled "Designing Walkable Urban Thoroughfares: A Context-Sensitive Solution." And I brought a piece of that with me tonight, I just wanted to read a few things out of it for council. The institute did prepare a report that was intended to facilitate the restoration of complex multiple functions of urban streets. We're walking... facilitate the restoration of complex, multiple functions of urban streets. We're walking in places where the community desires to provide a more walkable thoroughfare in the context to support them in the future. They would emphasize thoroughfares in a walkable community, things like neighborhoods, town centers, urban centers, urban cores, and other areas where walking, cycling, and transit are encouraged. The principles promote a collaborative, multidisciplinary process that involves all stakeholders in planning and designing transportation facilities, to meet the needs of users and stakeholders, things that are compatible with their setting and preserve the scenic, aesthetic, historic, and environmental resources of the area. They respect design objectives for safety, efficiency, multimodal mobility, capacity, and maintenance, and integrate community objectives and values relating to compatibility, livability, sense of place, and urban design. I hesitate to use the word compromise, but through this process, we'd consider trade-offs that may be appropriate when trying to balance the needs of all users. Adjoining land uses, the environment, community interests would all be considered when making decisions in the project development process. So what do the walkable communities' principles include? They include things like accommodating pedestrians, cyclists, again, transit, freight, motor vehicles, all within an urban network, and creating a supportive relationship between the thoroughfare, again, and context by designing thoroughfares that will change as the surroundings vary in urban character. And the benefits would include, the benefits of a master plan through this process would include safe, comfortable facilities for pedestrians, attractive street-side areas, appropriate sizing of facilities with respect to pavement with associated potential for cost savings in the right-of-way, successful mitigation of transit facilities and operations, or, sorry, integration of transit facilities and operations, and speed management. So those are some of the things I'm looking forward to out of this study. A master plan would be in place to provide a review of the Uptown Commercial District for the purposes of traffic and pedestrian movement, streetscaping, infrastructure needs, public spaces, parking surveys, utility coordination, park, project management, approval, acquisition, preliminary design, and detailed design. And within this RFP, we included the Mill Street West area between Erie Street and Albert Street, or Fox Street, sorry. So the Mill Street sewer separation and beautification would be combined into this. The sewer component would be the easy part. The underground portion, I consider, the easy part for sewer separation and additional water main. But the surface works that would come about would be from the process that we'd be going through concurrently, and it would incorporate the works and the discussion of the Uptown Master Plan, to put in place those ideas and those principles. So Leamington does support the principles of walkable community, communities, to accommodate consumers, tourists, pedestrians, cyclists, transit, freight, and motor vehicles. We also like to, or encourage, the use of the Ontario Traffic Manual, accessible design, mixed-use environment, multimodal networks, and creating relationships between the surrounding land use character and the right-of-way. I wanted to talk a little bit specifically about Mill Street. The objective of that component, again, is to build on the planning and design features formed during our Uptown Master Planning process, to revitalize Mill Street West between Erie Street South and Fox Street. The successful consultant will develop a reconstruction plan that would accommodate all forms of traffic, parking, sewers, streetscapes, regulatory agency requirements, again, and utilities, and the existing horizontal and vertical alignments. So through the RFP process, we did receive three submissions. They were reviewed through, by administration, and R.C. Spencer Associates submitted the most advantageous proposal and addressed all the necessary deliverables in things like the project team, the work plan, schedule, fees, and quality control. In the financial impact section of my report, I note that R.C. Spencer proposes to complete the engineering and design for two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars and is expected to have tender-ready drawings, excuse me, for Mill Street, completed by February 2018. The budget for this project, set in 2017, was two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So we are recommending that the project be awarded to R.C. Spencer, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to enter into the necessary agreements.
Thank you. Questions from council? Wilkinson?
Well, it's usually my colleague, Mr. Jacobs, that asks this question most times. Alan, I'm sure you've seen this coming. And I thought the same thing last night when I read this report. It would have been nice, especially on a report that's north of two-hundred-thousand dollars, to see where this ranked amongst the three. So first of all, I guess I'm going to ask for a little bit of explanation why we don't see the three quotes and what they were. And if you could let me know, or let us know, where did R.C. Spencer rank? Were they the most expensive? Were they the most affordable? Not that I want to base this all on cost. You know, I want as much value as I can get. But if you could expand on that, that would be great.
Sure, I'll do my best. R.C. Spencer was not the lowest. They weren't the cheapest. Again, our RFP process is designed to try to get other parameters, other than the cost, to rise to the top of our decision-making. We like to see good project managers. We like to see creativity. So the cost is a small fraction of the decision. It's not even fifty percent. It's less than thirty percent or twenty-five percent in most cases. So we'd like to go through the, and in fact, I didn't review this particular one and create the final ranking. I had staff do that. But the proposal provides me with the confidence that this firm, in this case, read through the document, understands the deliverables that we want, and put the correct team together with the right schedule, and has the right ideas, and was that much better than the other ones, that they rose to the top of the ranking.
Sure. Thank you, Alan. I'm hoping that maybe Mr. Toffmeyer would come down then at that point. And I want to hear, you know, what makes R.C. Spencer, you know, so much, besides what you mentioned there. I'd like to hear it right from them, you know, why they are the value, they have more value than the others, I guess. You mentioned the team, the team players involved, the leadership. I'd like to hear, expand on that a little bit more. I don't even know who the other, who the other firms were, you know. I'm hoping I get a little more here.
Personally, I'm uncomfortable with that, because the other proponents aren't here to say why they're better, kind of like that paint discussion we had, which was a little bit beyond. But Ruth, do you have a comment in regard?
Well, I think you've already said it, Mr. Mayor. In a procurement process such as an RFP, or a request for proposal, or any other competitive bidding process, the opportunity to put one's best foot forward is through that process. And to allow the opportunity to have one of the proponents come forward and provide, even though it might be the one that's recommended, provide further comments above and beyond what was already in that bid for the work would be inappropriate. So I think it's appropriate for Alan to comment as to why R.C. Spencer was chosen, which I think he already has within the report and with his additional comments. But to provide any further opportunities would not be appropriate.
Counsel Hammond, next.
Your Worship, thank you. Alan, and just going through the report, if I may, when we're talking about dealing with Mill Street, I would imagine the lion's share of that two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand is for the engineering for the sewer separation and the storm sewers on Mill Street. Is that a fair assessment?
My recollection is that works just over half of what, of this number you see here.
Counsel Jacobs?
I thank you, Your Worship. Just to pick up on Counsel Wilkinson's thing here, this comes before us, and I say this with all respect. I don't think there's any, you know, underlying motives why these things are done this way. And I want to make that very clear. I'm not making any insinuations to that respect. However, I think for the comfort of us sitting up here, at least for myself, anyway, why are we not given a copy of the, I guess, the final decision paper, like the ranking or whatever? In other words, Company A was derelict in this position. Company B exceeded in this property. And I just think for the comfort of us sitting here to make these decisions, could we not have access to that? Or is it, you know, additional labor for you? Or like, what's the, you know?
I would think it would be huge to those reports for us. And I don't think any of us are qualified enough to analyze who is better at doing whatever, because we're not involved in the industry.
No, what I'm saying, though, but if you're doing a rank, okay. I mean, it's, you're looking at the different areas of the submissions that they're putting in. And we all sit on committees that we review tenders and so forth. So like, how is it ranked? I mean, is it ranked because, you know, the guy's there from nine to five, the other guy's there from three to four? Like, I don't know. But I guess the ranking, there has to be a process that they're ranked. I mean, you know, you get a two or a three for each line that's, that we're requesting on a proposal. That's what I'm looking at.
I understand where you're coming from. I'm just saying that, like, I mean, he's got a ring on his finger that I don't have, right, an engineer.
Do you?
And that's where our shortcomings are. That's why we have staff, because we have to place our trust and confidence in them, that they're going to make those recommendations that are best for the town. So that's where my comfort level is.
And I'm not saying that I have the ring on my finger. That gives me that. All I'm saying is if you're looking at the rankings, is all I'm saying. Like, it's black and white, is it not? Like, it's, that's how it came out. Like, I don't know, like, would be a...
So if A ranked at thirty percent, and B ranked at...
Yeah, exactly.
That's what you want to say, just a summary.
Yeah, a summary of why. So we're comfortable in saying, okay, R.C. Spencer...
Came in at eighty percent.
Came in at eighty percent. And, you know, we can understand now why this guy is lower, this guy is higher, or whatever. And it's just not on this particular project. And I say with all due respect, I'm not questioning the integrity of anyone here. I'm just saying for...
I don't think anybody is. I'm just...
No, I want to be very clear on that.
Yeah. I'm just looking after the legal aspect, that I, we just, you can't step into those waters. Well, so can I go staff first? Okay, so Rob, and then Ruth, and then the Deputy Mayor, and then back to Counsel Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And Ruth does, I'm just going to make a quick comment, and then Ruth has a couple of things to say generally about the processes. But as you can appreciate, in this particular submission, three qualified firms submitted proposals to us. And then it is up to us to dissect these, sometimes upwards of hundred, two-hundred-page documents, looking at the management team that put together similar experiences, and then come up with a justifiable way in which to score these, and then come to a recommendation. That's our internal processes. Certainly, the challenge of bringing all of our detailed scoring criteria in open public session and to council is that, you know, certainly don't want to get into debating, you know, why one particular qualified engineering firm was an eight on their project team, and one was a seven. Because even then, we'll have to dig in and say, well, this is their project team, and this individual has experience designing Uptown master plans, or is an expert in traffic. We have to go through these processes because of our open public procurement. Certainly, in different environments and private industry, we would do this evaluation in a much less formal process, and we would select whoever we wanted to do business with based on, you know, the firm. And certainly, price isn't, you know, isn't where you land when you're hiring intellectual services. When you can't define exactly what that end product is, you're putting a lot of faith in hiring the people that are going to work on that particular project for you. So, I mean, that's all I had to say on the process. The way that we've presented it before council tonight is the way that we have traditionally always done it. But I know we are doing some reviews.
Ms. Arden?
Part of our plan, our work plan for 2018 in legal and legislative services, and hopefully even before the end of 2017, we're going to start on a process to look at our actual procurement policy, to amend that policy, to create something far more robust that we can bring forward to council. And in connection with that, we're also looking at our actual tender documents, our RFP documents, our templates. And together with that, we'll look at our reports that we bring to council. So we'll look at best practices in other municipalities. We'll look to the industry leaders to tell us what we should have in those documents, what's most appropriate. So you'll see some changes to those reports potentially coming forward in the future, too. So those were timely comments, and we'll look at the whole process from beginning to end in the near future.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Mine, my questions are a little bit more in the technical part, if you will. Technical for this, keep it simple, stupid people. I guess I was under the impression that we were going to do some concrete things this year. I had hoped, like, in the initial discussions on this enhanced core, we had hoped Mill Street would be our first, you know, out of the blocks, whatever they call that, when the horse gets out of the blocks. That would be the biggest impact for the least amount of money. But the way I'm understanding it here, this two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand is going to pay for the engineering design, first of the master plan, as well as Mill Street. So we're not going to do any concrete things this year at all on Mill Street. Further to that, we had also discussed how the sewer was fairly far down on the list of priorities, correct, of all the sewers that needed to be redone in the community. And we had said, I believe, I remember it this way, that, Rob, you had said it was like ten years out. And I think my answer back to you was, well, in ten years, we would probably need to redo this. So why not do it now and wait the ten years till it's time to do the sewer? So this convoluted question, get to the point, Bill, is. So we're not doing anything concrete, correct? We're just doing the design, and then we're probably going to start with the sewer, like the infrastructure stuff, next year. We may not even get to the sexy part next year at all.
Mr. Scher.
Here, mic's not on. Sorry.
Pending 2018 budget deliberations, if council approves the project, we would certainly expect to be tendering earlier in the year, February, breaking ground as soon as weather permits, and completing the entire project in 2018, in the summer of 2018. We should be done. Mill Street.
Sewers and the aesthetic. Wow, okay. No, that's good. But I guess I just misunderstood. I thought we were going to do bollards and angled parking, because we had hoped it wasn't going to cost that much money. I'm fine with this. This means that we're doing it from the bottom up. I'm good with it. So that's something we can tell the people on Mill Street, because the questions have been coming, and I don't feel like I've given them the correct answer at any point in time. So that's good. Thank you. That's what I needed to know, because I wasn't quite sure, Alan. I understood your report. It was, that part was good. It was just my background that I wasn't up to speed. But thank you.
Counsel Wilkinson. You okay? Good. Mr. Niffel?
Just further to Deputy Mayor's comments. We heard what council had to say, and we went away and we had another spirited discussion or two about how... went away and we had another spirited discussion or two about how we can accomplish what council wants to accomplish and still do our due diligence as it relates to spending money and not doing certain infrastructure at the time when we're already opening things up. And it's not an easy answer. The, boy, the word of the night is compromise. The compromise on this was that initially, we had proposed that we were going to do a full master plan that brought in the waterfront development and the uptown redevelopment. So what we have changed on this is that we are doing the uptown with a focus on Mill Street. We're going to get to Mill Street. We're going to do some exciting things there, is what R.C. Spencer has guaranteed. And, but we've pushed back on some of the other, the big master plans. We're saying, we know what we want to accomplish here, let's get to it. And whatever we do going forward with the other master plans, which we will do, this will dovetail into that. In other words, we're not holding up getting at Mill Street until we have the entire waterfront and uptown redevelopment plans ready. We're going to carve this out so we can get moving on it. And that was as a direct result of our conversation earlier.
Okay, so I'm going to build up to my question. The sewers, underground infrastructure on Talbot West, Talbot East, Erie North, Erie South, the Four Corners, basically, are they current enough? Do they also have to be replaced like Mill Street?
At this moment, we have separated in good sewers on the west leg, say Talbot West, and Erie South. Those are separated and in good shape. The other two legs are not. So we would have to rehab or replace the sewers on Erie North between Talbot and John Street, and then on Talbot from Erie to Victoria.
Okay. So the reason for my questioning is this. And I've had a discussion with our C.A.O. a couple of times, I think. Spirited. What if council says, you know what, Mill Street really isn't that important? If we really want to make a big impression on our uptown core, isn't it the Four Corners? And isn't it Erie Street South, Erie Street North, and Talbot East especially? And eventually Talbot, wait a second, Talbot West, and then eventually Talbot East, and then eventually Mill Street? Even if you're coming into town from Wheatley, Highway 77, or Kingsville, Windsor, whatever, you're coming in on those streets, not Mill Street. So to make that visual effect, and maybe it's just me talking here, but if council were to say that after you've gone to the trouble of getting R.C. Spencer to do this report and planning for sewer lines on Mill, and council directs differently, what happens then? And I'm talking 2018 budget deliberations, what happens. Not saying it's going to happen, because I haven't asked any of these guys what they think, so...
Mr. Sharon?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Well, certainly at the discretion of council, council will select which projects they wish to do. Assuming council approves this tonight, we will move forward and design Mill Street. And frankly, I would tend to think regardless of what council does with the capital project, the actual construction, that design will not be for naught. So that design will continue to live on. But if council does not wish to proceed with construction of Mill Street next year, we would continue on with the master plan, designing and laying out the uptown revitalization. And then from that, council could take a look at the projects that have been identified, the capital works have been identified in this plan, and communicate to administration which is the priority. We would certainly bring forward a recommendation that will have been thought out, and there would be a methodology behind it as to how we came up with our priorities and how we think we should, as Lymington approached the revitalization. But that would be up to the discretion of council. In our discussions with council, when we think about uptown revitalization, Mill Street was selected because we felt it would be, it would represent almost a community gathering space. It's all about bringing people to the uptown to use it, as opposed to how it looks as you're driving through it. And, you know, that's why we felt that it could become, given some of the things that have happened there and some of the discussions we've had, the strategic planning, that Mill Street could become that gathering place, somewhere where you have night markets, and the road is closed, and celebrations happen there. But again, until council approves the projects and gives us our marching orders to construct, the order in which we proceed is at discretion of council.
Okay. So, and that's, I was going to say, I am so tired of doing master plans. But hearing Alan describe what's included in it, and the information you need, we all need to make the decision going forward, even though we've done master plan plannings in the past, and I'm not sure where they are. But if in that master plan, and we're talking about the entire uptown in the master plan part of it, but the design and build of 2018 is strictly focused on Mill Street, if council were to say, you know what, while we're doing Mill, can we find money somewhere to do Talbot West at the same time? And that's why I asked the question about the sewers. If they're okay there, that signals to me that Talbot West is doable as well, if the money is there, and if the desire to do so is there. Thinking in my mind, that that is a far more visual thing that people are going to see immediately, more so than Mill. I think Mill has great potential. I'm not pooh-poohing. I'm not trying to shut it down. I think it's a great spot. But the people I've been talking with have been saying the same thing. Well, who's going to see that unless you go there particularly? Whereas when you drive into town from east, west, or north, or south, whatever, you see the Four Corners. So I'm just throwing that out there for discussion again.
And if I may, I would suggest that if that is something that council is desiring, then we should have those conversations very soon. Because even the timeline we've laid out to try and accomplish what we hope to accomplish in 2000, we're already behind. So if we're talking about actually looking to expand the construction, we need to do a number of things. We need to, one, bring that into this project scope. Because typically when you're, the whole reason you do a master plan is, well, because we're talking about tens of millions of dollars of public sector money, and you need to make sure you do it right. So you can't have sidewalks to nowhere, roads that don't work with one another. It needs to be an intensive thoughtout process. But if, so we would need to take a look at how do we bring in the more detailed design? Because if we want to do any work, then that means, you know, high-level feasibility, high-level design, detailed design, you know, our entire tendering process, and then construction. So that would have to start very soon as well. It would be another portion of the entire uptown master plan that essentially gets set in stone early on in the process. But that's okay. You know, we have to deal with those, you know, at times. And again, it's going to, a lot of that will also depend on the nature of the underground works. So we would also have to, you know, take a look at the other buried infrastructure and determine, you know, would any of that, practically, should any of that be included in a reconstruction, a road reconstruction, beautification process?
Understood. And I guess my musings are just because of what Deputy McDonald is talking about. We had, excuse me, in our mindset, we'd see something happening by now. And again, not playing big administration or anything, we kind of understand what the process is now. I guess I'm just anxious to see some of the visions that we've had have happening sooner than later. So that's the reason for my questioning. Anyway. Yeah, sure, if you want. Yeah, it doesn't matter to me. I was just throwing it out there for comment, whatever.
I believe that we chose Mill Street because we thought it was the easiest and the quickest. But that was before we had any of the background information of the necessary infrastructure. I believe that was looking at the diagrams and saying, what can we get biggest bang for not the most bucks? And that's why Mill Street came up, and hand-in-hand with the idea of the farmer, you know, not the farmer's market, with the night market. And it was hopefully going to be a place for further things like that. Even on the heels of Hogs for Hospice when they had the concert, we saw it as more of a, like a venue place, that little street. So that's why that came to the forefront. But none of us at that point in time realized that it would also involve sewers, and so...
And again, I'm not disagreeing with doing Mill Street. I think it's great. That's a great idea.
Yeah. No, I know. But you have raised to me, not a flag, but certainly another possibility that we didn't consider because we didn't realize it. So that's all I wanted to say.
I don't think I'm going to let you talk. I know what you're going to say.
No, you don't. Mr. Newfeld?
I think that there's a subtle difference in how we're viewing Mill Street versus Talbot. And, Mr. Mayor, you actually said it, as you drive in on Talbot, and who's going to see Mill Street? You'd have to actually get out and go to it. Exactly. That is the difference in philosophies, that, as Mr. Sharon had said, that the Mill Street idea is a gathering place to get people to come into the uptown, the foot traffic. That's what we're trying to create. Along with, you know, our art center, and the bank theater, and the library, that it is the first step in getting people to come back into town for a purpose, as opposed to driving through. I get what you're talking about with Talbot. And, you know, that would even make sense, because you'd say, well, we bought those two properties, we tore them down, we created this gateway between Talbot and Mill Street, and where does it come out? Right at Queen. So why wouldn't we then extend over into Queen? So I think this is what we're struggling with, is to say, how can we get started, do something that council is looking for it to happen without us having to say, oh, but then while we're doing this, let's do this. And, oh, by the way, since the wall is open, let's, you know, let's replace all of the electrical work. It's a reconstruction, you know? And if any of you have been through that, you know what that's like. But we're trying to, we're trying to get a bite at this thing without having to take in the hole. I understand what you're talking about, especially on Talbot West, and, you know, it links over to Queen. But it's the difference between the impact you'll have driving into town or the impact you have coming to town. And I think that therein lies the difference between the Mill Street and the Talbot Street projects.
Counselor Jacobs?
I thank you, worship. Just for clarification, Rob, you mentioned a gathering place, and our C.A.O.'s mentioned it. Where's a gathering place on Mill Street? I guess I'm sort of lost as far as a gathering place, like...
The whole of Mill Street.
Pardon me?
The whole of Mill Street.
The whole of Mill Street, but I mean, and I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the businesses that are there, but what businesses are there that are attractive to, you know?
He hasn't been uptown in a while, eh?
No, I've been uptown, but you know where I'm coming from with this?
Well, just go down the street. You've got Thrift on Mill, you've got the furniture store, you've got Brad's Butcher Shop, you've got the art center, and the Gregor Building is being developed. There's a number. It's a...
So, Mr. Newfeld?
I think in addition to, rather than thinking of it that way, remember what government can do is create the environment which will attract the entrepreneurs. We don't open stores, right? But we can create the environment that will make people stop and say, now there's a place that we want to be involved. They're going to be having a night market down there. That aligns with the business that we would like to be involved with. If there's going to be a night market there, would a brew pub fit in down there? So it's not so much about creating the atmosphere around what's already there. It's creating the atmosphere for what we want to be there. That's the revitalization.
And I guess I'm using the term as a gathering place. To me, gathering means that you're bringing a bunch of people to a concert or to, you know what I'm saying, into a specific setting. So what you're saying, you're making it attractive for shoppers, more so than, rather use the terminology, gathering.
Deputy Mayor?
We talked about putting bollards that could go up and down and stop traffic so that no cars could use it. And then it would become a gathering place. You could do a festival at night. That's the only place, that was a great, it's a great street to do with bollards because there are businesses there. Queen Street has the, you know, one wall of kind of nothing, where, and I'm just talking the brick wall there. This just has more spot, more shops, and it becomes walkable. But it was the bollards, the fact that we could close off that street, then it becomes the gathering place. Queen Street doesn't have the same feeling, and no negativity there, because the gallery there is fantastic. But you just need a little bit more, you need more storefronts than just plain walls. And that's what that section of the street does. And they found it, it worked really well with the Hogs for Hospice when they had all the food trucks and all that kind of thing. The length of it, Queen Street's a little short for that. This is a nice long street. They were able to have the bar things out, like bar patios. So a number of things came into place that that was a street that would work better than any of the other ones that we had consequently gathering place.
My comments were basically hung up on the word gathering. So I was thinking of a park setting where people want, like Ziegler Park, gathering spot, I guess. That's what I was looking at, more so. But now that you've explained the other, I can understand it. Thank you.
Further comments, questions? All good? So what are council's wishes, then? Deputy Mayor, move the recommendation, supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carried. Move on to the next item, which is regarding tender results for the asphalt program. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Within the 2017 annual road resurfacing program, the municipality has already completed the rehabilitation and resurfacing of Mercy Road D, milling and paving of Luch, North, Mill Street East, and Elliot Street. The subject tender we're speaking of tonight includes for the milling and paving and related concrete repairs of the following road segments: Cedarington Avenue from Erie to Princess, Albert Street from John to the north end near Selkirk Park, the installation of Always Stops at Victoria Marlboro and Wagle Marlboro, and resurfacing of the roadways in the vicinity, the milling and paving of a portion of the Princess parking lot. So on February 22, 2017, we closed tenders. We did receive one submission from the Millam Corporation. We did look at their numbers, and they are consistent with the unit rates that we've been getting in other projects this year. So we are recommending that we do award this project to Millam. But in the financial impact section, I just wanted to draw your attention to Table Two, just to recap what we've done so far this year, and to look at the three budgets that are funding this particular contract. So this particular contract's funded from our road resurfacing budget, a parking lot budget, and a separate line item in the engineering budget called Always Stops. So if you look, again, if you look at Table Two, we had $1.4 million set aside for resurfacing. To date, we've spent just over $1 million. The subject tender includes just over $250,000. The parking lot budget included $75,000. This contract shows that it will come in at just under $67,000. The Always Stop budget was $100,000. And by the time we're finished that project, we'll have, we'll be slightly over that one by just over $6,000. So I just wanted to recap that for council's information. And we, again, we are recommending that this contract be awarded to Millam Corporation.
Thank you. Questions from council? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is the report regarding scheduling of council meetings. Ms. Percy?
At the December 19, 2016 council meeting, council approved changing the council meeting dates to be held on the second and fourth Monday in each month, unless such Monday is on a public or civic holiday. The meeting would then be at the same hour on the next following day, which is not a public or civic holiday, and that the matter be brought back to council in one year for reevaluation. Since the change of the number of meetings, the average meeting duration is two hours and seven minutes. There were a number of longer meetings in 2017 due to... There were a number of longer meetings in 2017 due to some well-attended public meetings related to planning matters. It's administration's recommendation that the 2018 council calendar of meeting dates be prepared identifying two meetings per month to be held on the second and fourth Monday of each month. If approved, a schedule will be prepared, posted on the municipal website for public information, and provided to the local paper, CTV Community Focus Television also. So the recommendation before council is that the meetings continue to be scheduled at two meetings per month and held on the second and fourth Monday of each month unless such Monday shall be a public or civic holiday, in which case council shall meet at the same hour on the next following day, which is not a public or civic holiday.
Moved by Councilor Verbeke, supported by Councilor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carry it. And the final report is one regarding noise bylaw exemption.
Thank you. The municipality received a request from the Leamington District Chamber of Commerce for an exemption from the municipality's noise bylaw for the community Christmas parade to be held on Saturday, November 25th, 2017. The parade route is shown on the map attached to the report. It extends from Georgia on Erie Street, traveling north to Wilkinson. And you can see printed on the map also where the stage is anticipated to be set up on Erie Street North. The request is for permission to have recorded music playing on stage from 12 till 8:30 PM. Recorded music or bands playing in the parade floats from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I can advise also that a request for fireworks to be held at 10 Wilkinson Drive, starting at 7:00 PM for approximately 15 minutes, was also included with, with the application. That will be processed under a separate permit application. The chamber has advised that they have contacted the neighbors within close proximity to the stage and the parade route to notify those neighbors of the noise bylaw exemption request. And at the time of the writing of the report, administration has not heard any concerns expressed. So the recommended action is that council grant the exemption from the noise bylaw between the hours of 12 till 8:30 PM on Saturday, November 25th, 2017 for the Leamington Community Christmas Parade.
Councilor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. I'll move it. Support it. Moved by Councilor Hammond, supported by Councilor Dunn. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Ho, ho, ho. That's his conflict. So there were no matters for approval or other matters for consideration. There is no report on, oh, there's a report on closed session this evening.
This is a report from the September 25th, 2017 meeting. A closed meeting was held at 5:30 PM prior to the open session of council pursuant to subsections 239, 2F, and 239, 2B of the municipal act for the purpose of considering two items. The first item was a confidential report, LLAS 4817, dated September 19th, 2017, regarding legal opinion municipal power to dispose of donated funds. The second item was a verbal report from the CAO on a personal matter about identifiable individual. There's nothing further to report. Proper notice of the meeting was given and the meeting adjourned at 6:04 PM.
Thank you very much. And then we have consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 75-17 being a bylaw to provide for the construction of a new access culvert over the Lebo Creek drain, northwest branch in Part Lot 6, Concession 7, corner of Mercy Road 7 and Highway 77, Municipality of Leamington, County of Essex. This bylaw is for first and second reading only. Bylaw 76-17, bylaw to authorize the Municipality of Leamington to enter into the authorized request or information services agreement with the Ministry of Transportation to assist with recovery of costs for damaged municipally-owned property. Bylaw 77-17 being a bylaw to provide that part lot control shall not apply to certain lands within the registered plan 12M607. Bylaw 78-17 being a bylaw to amend 71-16 Schedule L Stormwater Management Fees. Bylaw 79-17 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the Municipality of Leamington at its meeting held October 10th, 2017.
Moved by Councilor Jacobs, supported by Councilor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries. There were no notices of motion circulated, so we're into open session for council and men. Councilor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. Just a reminder to everyone, I'm sure that we're all looking forward tomorrow night, most of us will be at the Business, Chamber of Business Excellence Awards, which is always a good time. I think there are a few, very few tickets left and they can be purchased through the chamber at, ask Wendy at the chamber. Also too, this coming Saturday evening, the bank theater's hosting its big reveal. And I know there are some tickets available for that. And those can be purchased through Ursula Tison at Counter Effects.
Thank you very much. Councilor Verbeke?
Where the mayor thanks. Today I got a call from a gentleman, because he got a call from the complex. There's a piece of Leamington history at the complex. It's a piece of the old oak tree that used to sit in front of Lee Gardens. And when they had to expand, they, they cut it down and it's Bob McCracken. And he hates to see it. It's, it's buried somewhere in the complex. He'd like to put it on display. And he's just wondering if it's possible that you could put it on display somewhere by the growing wall or, and it's kind of interesting, the history I learned, you know, I guess you're never too, too, too old or too young to learn about how he dated it back to when they started putting sewers in, that the tree stopped growing by the growth rings. So it's, it's kind of interesting. And he was willing to fix it up the way it, it should have been if, because he said some kids took some pegs out of it and it's, you know, but he's willing to, to fix it and I think it'd be a great piece of history to put into our, into our growing wall area. But that's just, I'm just throwing that out for there, but if not, at least put it on display somewhere.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Sharon, you have...
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, members of council. I was asked tonight to provide an update on our three sewer separation projects that we have ongoing in Leamington right now, so I'm going to take the opportunity to do that. I'm going to start with our Parkdale Sewer Separation Project. This was approximately an $800,000 project separating the sewers to approximately 20 properties along that area. So the, the sewer separation part of it is the fairly straightforward part, but because it's, it was a small, narrow road, dead-end road, we're also reconstruct, reconstructing the entire road as well as building a proper cul-de-sac on that dead-end portion and what was previously a dead-end portion as well. So obviously that means a lot of inconvenience for the people living along Parkdale. So certainly, you know, if any of those residents are watching, we thank you for your patience thus far. We are on schedule with that project, so we're looking to be completed mid-November in Parkdale. The second project is our Danforth Sewer Separation Project, so that's approximately a $3 million sewer separation project. I think around 65 homes along that Danforth area. Again, we're adding sidewalks to both sides, completely reconstructing the road. Thus far, we have our main line sewer in, we have the water main in, and we're working on connections and road cuts to the various homes along there. We're looking mid to late November for completion of that project as well. We're a little bit behind the schedule, but again, we're hoping to make some time up in other parts of the project, as is typical with these types of projects. The final is our Point Pele Drive Sewer Project. So we're currently working on Phase Four between Road D and Road E. We're expecting the main line part of the sewer to be done in approximately three weeks and the total project to be completed in December. That would include a base course of asphalt. And then, then we break for the, for the winter and then come the spring, we would get into Phase Three. And I do want to mention that, so Phase Three would begin in the spring and we'd look to complete that by the summer of next year. I did want to mention that the extensive dewatering we had to do was successful. Peter and I actually, week before last, took a drive out there to watch the process because it is an intensive project. It's a deep sewer, very sandy soils, very challenging installation for the contractor. But it, but it has been successful. There was certainly some concern that, you know, there would be some infiltration, wasn't just groundwater, it was lake infiltration and how successful would the pumping actually be? Well, it's proved successful enough that they've been able to install the sewer and we're remaining relatively on schedule on that project.
Very good. Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
May I ask how the cost, costings looking? Are we going to come in close? Are, are they looking like cost overruns at this point in time or do you think we're okay?
Through Mayor Patterson, nothing at this point has led us to believe that we'd be experiencing cost overruns with the project managers who manage the quantities associated with these buried civil projects. Typically, if they see anything that's happening in the project that, you know, is exceeding our expectation with regards to quantities and therefore costs, this isn't like building a, a building where you say, build me this and everybody bill, bids and you get what they told you. And this is underground, so a lot of assumptions has to go, have to go into the, the quantities and the number of hours to do the job. But again, so far, nothing's been brought to my attention that we're over budget and staff basically said that it's successful in the project, it's, it's working well. Businesses.
Good. Mr. Newfeld?
And further to that, I, I was struck most pleasantly, actually, when we went down there by the number of trees that were still standing. And having a discussion with the, with the manager that was on, on site, he indicated that even though they've had to open up the road very, pretty much shoulder to shoulder, that they had brought in an arborist who had looked at the trees, had trimmed them back where they needed to be trimmed back, taken out, only the ones that needed to be taken out. And you can, you can see that the canopy that was there still, it exists. So I was, I was very pleasantly surprised to see the number of trees that were still, they were able to leave during the construction.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sharon, for that report. I just wanted council to hear what, you know, how things were going, so. Anything else from anyone? So real quick for me then, I just wanted to thank the council members, deputy mayor and whomever else stood in my stead while I was away. Conference one week and then vacation, another week. So that's why I haven't been around and I certainly appreciate the help that all of you have extended for me. And, and finally, I just, on behalf of council, I think, and we've already done it earlier this evening, but just wish a happy anniversary to Councilor Verbeke and his lovely wife, Margaret. Hope you have a, a great day, so.
One year.
Exactly. Where else would you be? Statement of members, non-debatable? None? Oh, sorry. Well, you're not a member, so I'll go back to open session.
I was waiting for you to do that.
Oh, I, I wasn't here for that, so if you'll do that, that's fine.
Last week ago, we were invited down to the Seaford Park where the Hogs for Hospice made their announcement on their fundraising efforts. And boy, they, the announcement, the size of the check is $200,000 this year. So that just speaks to the incredible success of this, this event, only in its second year. And they promised bigger and better for the next year. So congratulations, I think, on behalf of, of the Municipality of Leamington to the Hogs for Hospice group for successful fundraising of $200,000 for the hospice here in, in Leamington.
Yep. Absolutely awesome. So now, statements, members, non-debatable? If not, motion to adjourn. Councilor Verbeke, Councilor Wilkinson, all in favor? Carry it.